Good morning. Good morning. If we can ask, uh... Shh. Good morning. Welcome to the Los Angeles City Council. Today is Friday, September 30th. And I welcome you all here. We are live on Channel 35 and streaming live on the Internet as well. I'm Councilmember Mitchell Englander, and I want to welcome you here today to your Los Angeles City Council. Madam Clerk, can we please call the roll?
Blumenfield, Bonin, Buscaino, Sadio, Englander, Harris Dawson, Wezar, Corretts, Krikorian, Martinez, O'Farrell, Price, Rue, Wesson. Ten members present in the court, Mr. President.
Uh, first order of business, please.
Approval of the minutes.
All right. Mr. Corretts moves, Mr. Bonin seconds. Next item, please.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Ms. Martinez moves, and Mr. O'Farrell seconds. Next items, please.
Mr. President, there are requests to receive and file 1A inasmuch as the lien was determined to be a single-family owner-occupied dwelling and therefore exempt from lien processing. Also, to receive and file 1C inasmuch as the lien was paid in full.
Okay, then that'll be the order without objection. Next items, please.
Next are items 1 and 2, and those are items noticed for a public hearing. Mr. President, there are cards on 1 as well as 2.
All right, then we'll go ahead and hold those. Next items, please.
Items 3 through 13 are items which public hearings have been held, and the committee reports for items... 3 as well as 12 have been submitted, and they are currently being circulated now, sir.
Okay, so we'll hold both of those for the committee reports, but I believe there's a request to hold...
3 and 12, yeah.
Yeah, 3 and 12, for those to be circulated, but I believe we also have some other requests as well. Ms. Martinez?
I was going to request item 12.
Okay, so we're going to actually hold item 12 as well for Councilwoman Martinez. Mr. Rue?
Item 11.
And item 11 as well, for Mr. Rue. Okay. Any other items special, colleagues? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and open the roll on the remaining items.
Uh, Mr. President, just for clarification, then those would be items 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, and 13.
Close session. That's correct, and we've got 3 for close session. Okay.
No. Items 3, we're waiting for the committee report to be distributed, sir.
Got it. Make a note of that. All right, we'll go ahead and open the roll on those remaining items, colleagues. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Those items are approved. Thank you so much. Next item, please.
Next are items 14 through 22, and those are items which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration, sir.
Okay, those are being considered without objection. Miss... Yes, Mr. Buscaino.
Please. 18.
18, okay.
Call special, thank you.
We'll go ahead and hold item 18.
Mr. President, there are cards on items 15, 16, 17, 18, 20, and that is all, sir.
Okay, so we'll have items 19, 21, and 22, colleagues. Seeing no specials on those, we'll go ahead...
As well as 14, sir, are available for council to vote on.
Okay, I thought you said 14 had cards. No? Okay. Then we'll go ahead and open the roll on those remaining items. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Great, those are approved. Thank you so much. Next items, please.
Next on the continuation agenda is item 23, and that is an item for which public hearing has been held.
Okay, we'll go ahead and take up item 23 unless anybody wants to call it special. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and open the roll on item 23. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
That is approved. Thank you so much. Next item, please.
Mr. President, it's a bit early for the special meeting. Would you... Council can take presentations as well as items called special, sir.
Yes, we're going to go ahead and... We'll take up presentations at this time. The first one, Councilwoman... Martinez, are you... You ready? Not yet? Okay. Mr. O'Farrell, you ready?
Yes.
All right. The floor is yours.
Good to meet you, Mr. Cruz.
It's a pleasure.
Good morning, colleagues. And I believe Mr. Sadio is joining for this presentation. Now, unfortunately, Mr. Sadio and I, we don't have our colleague, Mr. Wezar, yet. He's going to have to arrive late because of a commitment, previous commitment, but Mr. Sadio and I are happy to present this wonderful presentation jointly. I want to welcome everyone standing around me at this moment, along with Mr. Sadio. October is Filipino-American History Month. Yay! Let's hear it! Mr. Sadio and I recognize five outstanding Filipino-American honorees as part of this year's celebration. First, I wanted to acknowledge and welcome the presence of our new Philippine Consul General, Adilio Cruz. Mr. Cruz. And the President of the Los Angeles Filipino Association of City Employees, otherwise known as LAFACE, Rea Lazo. Rea. Thank you, Consul General Cruz, for your support, and we look forward to working with you in your new capacity. And special thanks to LAFACE for hosting a reception in the forecourt immediately after today's council presentation, where you'll get to hear from some of these awardees. Also present today is Board of Public Works Commissioner, Joel Jacinto. Joel. And I just got to say, I got to give Joel a shout-out. He is just amazing to work with in my district. We're collaborating on so many wonderful things, and it's just such a pleasure to work with you, Joel. I am particularly proud to be here today as the representative of historic Filipino Town, a neighborhood that has been home to Filipinos since the 1940s and served as a gateway for many Filipino immigrants in Los Angeles. Today, Hi-Fi remains the cultural heart of the Filipino-American community in Los Angeles. Recently, we held the Hi-Fi Highlights Streetlight Public Art Design Contest in line with the installment of 54 new pedestrian streetlights along Temple Street in the heart of historic Filipino Town, with installations already in progress. And that was a complete collaboration with the leadership of Mr. Jacinto of the Board of Public Works. The contest was part of an effort to improve pedestrian safety in the neighborhood while showcasing the unique contribution of Filipino culture to the tapestry of Los Angeles. I would now like to invite Mr. Sadio to say a few words.
Thank you.
You bet.
Good morning, everybody. This is a... For me personally, it's a very important holiday. When my father came to Los Angeles in 1941, this is where he moved, and this was part of his experience right in these neighborhoods. In fact, I actually, since we share a border, I live right at... Right on the border. I'm on this street all the time, and so it's very important to me. It's been very important to my work as well. I'm the author of a bill that helped Filipino veterans, veterans of World War II, who were promised to be compensated for their partnership with us during that, perhaps, the last great war that brought the world together in the war against fascism and racism and ignorance. Filipinos were promised to be given benefits, and they were not. That was stricken out of the budget after World War II, and you can imagine, mostly young men at the time did not pay much attention to it, but as they got older in age, that became an issue. And when I ran for office, it was this area that I represented, and I'm proud to say that the state of California was the first entity to give benefits to Filipino veterans and thank them for their contribution, and we are forever indebted to their service and their sacrifice. In addition, um, that bill was signed. The President of the Philippines at the time came with the governor and joined us in those ceremonies. I've also been honored to have a rich staff of Filipinos prominent in the community. Everyone knows Mal E. Lohman on my office. He was with me the first day. He continues to be with me. Besides being very competent in the field of politics, he's also a writer, a musician, and has written musicals that have been performed. Tony Rokasa is also one of the great Bruins Filipino community leaders who was a member of my staff. Marissa, um... What's her name? No, no, I can't remember. Vaharano?
Yeah.
Is a professor at UC San Diego. She was in my staff. Um, who else is missing?
Gerald.
Oh, and of course, the premier planner of the city of Los Angeles, the man who is bringing us housing in numbers that are unprecedented, has taken us from being last in housing to first, Gerald Gubatán. Is he on the floor?
Yes.
He's upstairs planning. Where is he? Gerald's not here?
He's here.
He's here. Gerald, like many Filipinos, very modest.
He is modest.
So, uh, let me first... Our first honoree, and we have three of them, is the Park's Finest Food Restaurant. Park's Finest is a staple for Filipino food in Los Angeles through the support of community members and local nonprofits. Park's Finest has been a neighborhood mainstay since humble beginnings in 2009, reaching mass appeal to food critics and food enthusiasts alike. Park's Finest is an incredible force to be reckoned with in the ongoing Filipino food revolution. Under the direction of Chef Jean Eric Concordia and with the support of his team of Christine Araquel Concordia, easy to say, Mike Pajimula, Anne Pajimula, Oscar Baltista, and many others, the restaurant has continually provided premium-quality barbecue while encapsulating the Filipino traditional values of hard work, hospitality, family, and bayan. 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 Okay. So, that's our first honoree, Park's Finest.
Park's Finest, stand. William Hausner. There we go.
You're saying...
Come forward. Yeah, come on. Come on forward. All the way up. Big steps. Into the spotlight where you belong. Yeah.
Thank you. All right.
Let's hold it up. Can everyone be seen?
Just lay over here.
Okay. All right. Two more.
Let me stand script here. Our second honoree is Rembrandt Flores. Brought a small part of his family with him today. Rembrandt Flores is the co-founder of a public relations, entertainment, marketing, and events-planning firm called The Entertainment Fusion Group. His exceptional work and innovative approach in the public relations industry has revolutionized the way brands gain global awareness and has led to some of the biggest events in entertainment that include the Coachella Music Festival, the Grammys, the Oscars, and no less, the Sundance Film Festival. In addition to being a PR executive, Flores is a philanthropist, an advocate for the Filipino-American community, with his involvement with numerous charities and with My Hope for Children, a nonprofit organization that provides relief and medical assistance to Filipino children who cannot afford them. Rembrandt, where are you?
Right behind you.
Right here. Congratulations.
Yes, I am now.
And that's like the greatest name ever, Rembrandt.
Thank you. Brush my teeth by the Rembrandt this morning.
Yeah.
One more?
One more?
Thank you.
And one last one?
Yeah.
Give me a whole crew here.
I know.
I'm really privileged and honored to introduce the next recipient. Everyone knows her. She's the one-go-to person. When you're doing something in the community, when you're getting involved in politics, everyone says, "Go see Ruby." And also, I love the fact that her and my wife share the same name. The third honoree is Ruby V. De Vera. And Ruby... All you have to do is say Ruby, because that's how everybody refers to her. Ruby is a lifelong political advocate and community service, has brought outstanding contributions and advancements benefiting the Filipino-American community in Council Districts 1, 13, 14, including the Los Angeles Filipino Association of City Employees, where she served as its president in 2007 through 2009. She was named Woman of the Year in the 55th Assembly District in 1989, Outstanding Woman during the City of Los Angeles Women History Month in 1991, Democratic Woman of the Year in the 45th Assembly District in 1996, and a Woman Achiever in the tri-city area of Gundale, Burbank, and Pasadena in 2014 for her exceptional work. Ruby is everywhere. When you're out in the community, she's everywhere. As I said, when you need to be, find counsel and inroads into the Filipino community, everyone says, "Go see Ruby." Ruby, where are you?
Ruby. Thank you. Good job. Good job. Okay. Okay, good. I just got to say, Ruby, like me, is also a Glassell Park resident, so Ruby and I go way, way, way back on community improvements and advocacy. So, Ruby, it's great to be up here with you again. Our fourth honoree, Gina Alexander. Gina Alexander. Come up, Gina, so you can be seen, is a successful Filipino businesswoman and fashion designer. Lovely. The Los Angeles-based designer is well-known amongst the celebrity world for her customizable handbags. Who doesn't like a good handbag? Her products have been sold through Nordstrom, Ice Accessories, and Saks Inc. Department, 40-plus boutiques nationwide, and over 600 professional photography studios worldwide. Gina inherited her strong entrepreneur spirit from her parents, Imelda and Cesar Lopez, who were the first Filipino couple to own a Denny's franchise in California. Wow. Who doesn't love Denny's?
That's right.
A lot of Superbirds.
There you go. From a young age, her father instilled in her the value of hard work and giving back to those in need. To honor her father's legacy, Gina donates a percentage from every bag sold to Hope for Children, an organization that has several orphanages throughout the Philippines. Thank you and congratulations, Gina Alexander.
All right, let's give her a round of applause. Thank you. And Mr. O'Farrell, I think we'd call that one the grand slam.
Oh, there you go. Wait for it, and all right, you'll get it. Santa Maria got it. Congratulations. You bet. Thank you so much, Gina. And our fifth honoree is Phil M. Arts. Phil M. Arts. In the house. Now, on your... Are you on your 25th anniversary? Is that...
Yes.
Yeah, 25? Okay. So, Phil M. Arts is leading presenter of traditional and emerging Filipino-American artists and art forms in Southern California. The annual Festival of Philippine Arts and Culture, FPAC, presents over 500 multidisciplinary artists to an audience of 25,000 from all over the country in collaboration with 200 community organizations, businesses, and government agencies, and involving more than 300 volunteers. Phil M. Arts believes in the power of the arts to overcome language barriers and build community through cultural diversity. Amen to that. They pursue their mission through five public programs, which include the annual Festival of Philippine Arts and Culture, which is coming back home to Echo Park Lake this Saturday, October 8th.
Yes.
A week from Saturday. The statewide Filipino Artists Network Arts Education Program, Escoela Cultura, Bi-Pinoi Campaign, the SeSe Project, a storytelling initiative. And as was mentioned, this is their 25th anniversary. Congratulations, Phil M. Arts.
All right, congratulations.
Let's squeeze you in. Let's squeeze... We'll squeeze in together, so everyone can be seen. Yeah.
Thank you.
So, lastly, Mr. Sadio and I would like to announce that Sunday, October 23rd, Filipino-American History Month Coalition will host a diverse array of intergenerational and trans-intercontinental talent at the Greek Theater. Therefore, we would like to have you all join us as we recognize and kick off October as Filipino-American History Month in the city of Los Angeles.
All right.
So, Consul General Adilio Cruz and Mel Orpia of Vallejo, immediate past president of the Filipino-American National Historical Society, please step forward, and let's gather for the official presentation of Filipino-American History Month, and congratulations all. Nabuhay and Miraming Salamat.
Thank you.
You bet.
Thank you.
All right, let's give them all again, another round of applause. Fantastic. Thank you so much. All right, thank you so much, and we've got... We've got a few more special presentations as well. Big shout-out to James Santa Maria. James always has fancy Stan socks going on. All right, so with that, we're going to go ahead and... Mr. Sadio, if you want to stay on up there for a special presentation from the council member of the first district, the one and only council member, Gil Sadio. While they're all clearing out, we're going to go ahead and take item 3, I believe has been circulated. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. The report for item 3 has been circulated.
All right, we'll go ahead and take item 3 now. If we can go ahead, councilmembers, and turn your attention back to the agenda on item number 3. Go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
That item is approved. Thank you so much. Mr. Sadio, the floor is yours.
Thank you.
And if we could ask, as you're making your way out of council chambers, please keep the voices down. We still have a lot of business before us, as well as special presentations. If we can please keep your voices down, so we can turn our full, undivided attention to this special presentation. Thank you so much.
Yeah? I don't know how many numbers we're going to... We are here to celebrate the 8th El Mes de Salud, the Month of Health, and I'm very excited to be here, because I was part of the beginning of this, and I recall, early on, as a product of our efforts with the state of California, the California-Mexico Health Initiative, and working with the consulates, working with healthcare providers on both sides of the border, we put politics aside.
Can I... Can I... I don't want to interrupt you, but I think everybody else in the room is interrupting you, particularly staff. If we can please... I'm not going to ask a question.
sides of the border. We put politics aside.
Can I? I don't want to interrupt you, but I think everybody else in the room is interrupting you, particularly staff. If we can please, I'm not gonna ask again, because then we'll have staff removed. Keep your voices down, or take the conversations outside. Let's not be disrespectful. Thank you so much. I want to hear every word.
Yeah, Mr. President, thank you. As I said, I recall being part of the initiative of this. It was part of the California-Mexico Health Initiative. Healthcare professionals put politics aside and put immigration politics aside to study this area and recognize that California is a place where immigrants come and live. And one thing about disease and health challenges is that they are apolitical, and they know no borders, they know no circumstance, they know no class differences. And so there are large communities, these large communities that come from Mexico, from Guatemala, Salvador, Central America, et cetera, who come with their hopes and aspirations to have a better life here. In some instances and in some circumstances, many of them will come with social diseases or public health challenges. El Mes de Salud is an effort, a collaborative effort, from both sides of the border to address this. And so I'm very proud this is the eighth El Mes de Salud. I'm honored to partner with the Council General of Mexico, here in Los Angeles, and more than 100 community organizations. And I'm talking about community clinics, government agencies, hospitals, and the Los Angeles County Department of Public Health for this launch of Health Month for the year 2016. It'll take place through this October. Medical services, as I said, can be complicated and expensive for immigrant communities. The political climate makes it unlikely, in many instances, that immigrants will pursue health services, given the current hysteria against immigrants. And this initiative is aimed to bring awareness about free and low-cost health services to the Latino community in Los Angeles. By proclaiming this month in Mes de Salud, we encourage our Latino constituents to see a doctor regularly, to focus on prevention, to utilize primary care, to engage in best practices, so that they can continue to be productive members of our community. Mes de Salud coincides with the activities of the Bi-National Health Week, sponsored by all 50 consulates of Mexico and the United States, and with us today to receive this proclamation and our great gratitude for the ongoing collaboration. In spite of the political climate, the Council General of Mexico, the Honorable Carlos Garcia de Alba.
Muy buenos dias. Mr. Chairman, thank you so much for the opportunity. It is my privilege to be here in front of this Los Angeles City Council for the second time in less than a month, and this time for a very important reason: health. And I want to take the opportunity to thank our very good friend, Council Member Gil Sadio, a real friend, a true friend, a partner, in many, many good causes like this one, precisely health. As he said, he has been a pioneer, supporting my government, and not just the Mexican government, other governments from Latin America, in the promotion of good health. For the eighth consecutive year, we are organizing El Mes de la Salud. That means to inform, to promote better health for the Latino community living in the county of Los Angeles and the city of Los Angeles. Thank you the county of Los Angeles as well for the big support that they give to us. It's a month that gives the opportunity to the community to get information about the most common health issues, from diabetes to HIV, or also bullying, that is a growing, sadly, growing problem that we have, breast cancer, and many more topics that we need to work in order to inform and to prevent. So thank you for this proclamation. It's a good way to spread the voice. There are many different events, health fairs, related to many different topics, and this proclamation is a good way to start El Mes de la Salud. Thank you so much for the opportunity, and everybody is welcome to attend the events of El Mes de la Salud. Muchas gracias.
Thank you very much. Okay, and colleagues, on item two, we're gonna go ahead and continue item two for 60 days. That'll take us to November 29th. So for those of you who are here on item two, or you've submitted cards, we will not be hearing that item today. Without objection, that'll be the order. And we'll go ahead now and turn it over to the, let me see here, which council district should I turn the next presentation over to? Well, seeing that, who's gonna take charge and just jump up at the podium?
I thought it was our turn, Mr. President.
I'm trying to look around and figure out who might want to give a presentation. Here we go. All right, Joe Busciano is now ready for the next presentation.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, you got it.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Power's not given, it's taken. It's all yours.
Thank you. Colleagues, it gives me great honor to recognize the longest-standing LAPD volunteer group in the history of the LAPD. Forty-seven years of volunteerism at LAPD Harbor Division, LAPD Harbor's Harbor Lights. Just give them a warm welcome here at the John Ferraro Chambers. Good to see you, June. These wonderful ladies before you are the Harbor Lights. Harbor Lights stands for Ladies Involved in Time, Effort, and Service, and is the most senior volunteer group in the history of the LAPD. This organization started 47 years ago under the direction of then-Los Angeles Police Department Commander Dan Sanchez, and it started as a grassroots nonprofit dedicated to serving the men and women of the LAPD Harbor Division and their youth programs. In fact, Commander Dan Sanchez is here today. Let's give him a warm welcome. Thank you, Commander, for being here. We love you. So the group started as a group of PTA mothers who formed a neighborhood watch and met once a month at Broad, Freeze, and Gulf Elementary Schools in Wilmington during their formative years. And this dedicated group started fundraising for Harbor Division in 1970 with their pasta dinners, pancake breakfasts, and famous salad lunches that, to this day, are held at the Harbor Pistol Range. And in fact, these Harbor Lights salad lunches are so famous that every chief of police for the LAPD since Chief Davis has been a guest there. And in addition to these wonderful meals, the Harbor Lights, under the leadership of past President Mary Jane Appolillo, and member B. Rados, and member Elaine Clark, created the Harbor Lights Annual Fun Fashion Show. And there, I had an opportunity myself, as a senior lead officer, to be involved in that fashion show. In fact, we also have Officer Jimmy Biasevich, who is a draw at these fashion shows, and Adriana Bravo, Senior Lead Officer Adriana Bravo. And I don't know Sergeant Plazza, but maybe we can get Senior Lead Officer Andrew Gonzalez a part of that fashion show this year, this coming year. But this fashion show has alone reached incredible fundraising milestones, all in support of our men and women at the LAPD Harbor Station. And the Harbor Lights utilized funds that have been raised a number of dollars for the recent completion at the LAPD Harbor Division Fallen Officers Memorial, which is prominently displayed at the lobby in the station. Most recently, the group was instrumental in working with my office and Assembly Member Patrick O'Donnell and Caltrans to install a memorial signed for two of Harbor Division's fallen officers, Bobby Mata and Roberto Sanchez. So as you know, I had a blessed 15-year career with the LAPD. My last six years, I served as a senior lead officer at the Harbor Division, and these group of women, I saw firsthand, their love and their commitment and dedication to police officers. They were like our adopted mothers and grandmothers, who just cared for us and took a minute to pause as we were running in and out of the police station to ask how we were doing. And they are just filled with so much love and compassion. And whether it was decorating the police station during the holidays, or providing food for the officers who worked during the holidays, these members, these before you, the Harbor Lights, were there for us each and every day. And for that, it was shocking to know that the Harbor Lights have never been recognized before this body in the 47 years of service. And I found out at last year, or earlier this year, they had the fashion show, and I found that out, that they have not been recognized here. So this is long overdue, colleagues. So let's give them another round of applause for their commitment and dedication to the men and women of the Harbor Station at LAPD. We love you.
And Joe, did you know, back in the day, before I was accepted into LAPD, clearly, they actually had a height restriction. And with that, who happens to be standing amongst you now in the back, and you can't miss him, is Officer Sanchez, who retired in 1978 as a commander with LAPD, and clearly back then had that height restriction. We see him. So I wanted to give a special shout-out, since we recognized that you're here as well. So thank you to all of you. Great presentation. Thank you so much.
If I can, Mr. President, I'd like to welcome the officer in charge of Harbor's Community Relations Office, Sergeant Katherine Plazza, say a few words on behalf of the group.
Fantastic, thank you.
My thanks to Councilman Joe Busciano. I was his boss for a brief period of time, and I can say, he was an excellent senior lead officer, and he's making us proud in Harbor Division. But moreover, the Harbor Lights have served our division for 47 years. It is an amazing feat that these women have come together, under the guidance of retired Commander Dan Sanchez, to make our lives as police officers just a little bit better every day. When all of us are at home, safe, on Thanksgiving, and Christmas, and New Years, and celebrating at church on Easter, these women come to the station. They make sure that each and every one of those officers that are working that day are fed and thanked. So they act not only as volunteers in our community, but they act as our grandmothers, our mothers, our sisters, and our friends. And it is my honor, on behalf of the command staff at Harbor Division, and all 260 men and women who work there, to thank them for everything they've done over the years. You are indebted to us, and we absolutely love and appreciate everything you've done for us. To my right, Mr. President, I'd like to introduce to you the original member of the Harbor Lights, Ms. June Chow, who I will not reveal her age, however, she is very spry for almost being a centarian. And she has been part of our organization for a long time, and we love and appreciate every single one of them. Thank you very much for this honor today.
Thank you very much. Wow.
So with that, if I may, Amy, thank you so much. On behalf of the City of Los Angeles, Mayor Garcetti, here you go, June, we'd like to recognize Harbor Lights for their efforts of serving the men and women of the Los Angeles Police Department Harbor Division. Let's give them another round of applause.
Big round of applause. Thank you so much.
God bless you.
They're here. Thank you, thank you.
All right. Look at Raymond. Thank you, Mr. President, colleagues.
You got it. No, thank you very much. All right, colleagues, while they're clearing out the center aisle, let's go ahead and take 11A is ready, it's been circulated. So we'll go ahead and take 11A is before us. Seeing no speakers on the queue, we'll go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
That is approved. Thank you so much. And now we'll turn the podium over for another special presentation to Councilwoman Nuri Martinez.
We'll meet you back there.
Okay, Dan, why don't you come this way? That's fine.
Are you guys ready?
Yep.
Hi. How are you?
Good.
I like our colors.
You do? It's gonna take off the glasses. I did a terrible one, too. Still use some fashion advice?
No.
You got lipstick teeth.
I always do.
Come on up.
Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. President, and good mornings, colleagues. As we enter October, I'd like to recognize that October is Girls Empowerment Month. In our city, women remain underrepresented in many fields such as business, media, STEM careers, public service, and public safety. Gender equity issues are worse for women who live in poverty. Here in Los Angeles, 70% of the student population lives in poverty. And on Wednesday, we confirmed our newest Public Works Commissioner. As was mentioned, Commissioner Rivas launched an organization in the northeast San Fernando Valley, the DIY Girls, to help expose young girls to science, math, and in an effort to get them engaged in STEM careers. We know that when our youth grows up in needy communities, it is often harder for them to access resources and programs that expose them to the career opportunities that equip them with the tools to be successful. It is through opportunities such as DIY Girls and Build Girls LA that young girls will have the opportunity to be exposed to non-traditional fields. As part of the Girls Empowerment Month within the City of Los Angeles, the city will provide support to explore initiatives through the LA's Promise Fund that will help girls and young women increase access to education and empowerment opportunities. The LA Promise Fund is supporting Girls Build LA, an empowerment program that will engage middle and high school girls in identifying challenges that women and girls face in their communities. No one is better equipped to identify these underlying causes of these problems than the girls that face them every single day. LA Promise Fund seeks to empower these students and give them the resources to research, innovate, and develop solutions. Last year, there were more than 7,000 young women attended screening of He Called Me Malala in the Girls Build LA program launch. 500 young women from dozens of schools attended the Girls Build LA forum, learning from experts about critical needs in the fight for gender equity and responding to a call to action. Over the next three years, more than 100 teams will develop grassroots solutions to urgent problems with far-reaching impact, positively affecting thousands of their peers and community members. I want to recognize a school in my district that's part of this program. It's the Will Rogers High School, who is here today, as well as young women from the program that are participating in this year's Girls Build LA initiative. With me this morning are Principal Sepovera Jones, who's here, their teacher sponsor, Dr. Minelta, and members of the Will Rogers Girls Team Build LA, Carla Bernice Lopez, Guadalupe Valdez, Carmen Madrigal, and Stephanie Ortega. I'd like to invite one of the students to share a few words about her experience, about the program. Stephanie Ortega is with us here this morning. Welcome, Stephanie.
Excuse me for one moment. I'm gonna ask folks to keep it down. Wayne, if you make another remark and shout-out from the chambers, I'm gonna ask you to be dismissed from the meeting, because you're disrupting the meeting. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. As part of the Girls Build LA team from Will Rogers High School in Venice, we are excited to participate in this program, because it gives us an opportunity to discover our potential and strong, independent women in the community, and to share our new ideas so that others may be empowered, inspired, and successful too. Girls rock.
Say it louder. Girls rock. That's right. Thank you, Stephanie. I'd also like to welcome one of my dear friends, who I've known for many, many years. She's an amazing woman. She's Veronica Melvyn, the CEO of LA's Promise Funds, who's leading this effort here this morning. Welcome, Veronica. Do you want to say her name?
Thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman Martinez. Thanks for sponsoring the Girls Empowerment Month for the city. Thank you, city council members. We appreciate being here. I can't say enough about the
I want to recognize a school in my district that's part of this program. It's the Will Rogers High School, who is here today, as well as young women from the program that are participating in this year's Girls Build LA initiative. With me this morning are Principal Sepovara Jones, who's here, their teacher sponsor, Dr. Minelta, and members of the Will Rogers Girls Team Build LA, Carla Bernice Lopez, Guadalupe Valdez, Carmen Madrigal, and Stephanie Ortega. I'd like to invite one of the students to share a few words about her experience about the program. Stephanie Ortega is with us here this morning. Welcome, Stephanie.
Excuse me for one moment. I'm going to ask folks to keep it down. Wayne, if you make another remark and shout-out from the chambers, I'm going to ask you to be dismissed from the meeting because you're disrupting the meeting. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. As part of the Girls Build LA team from Will Rogers High School in Venice, we are excited to participate in this program because it gives us an opportunity to discover our potential and strong, independent women in the community and to share our new ideas so that others may be empowered, inspired, and successful too. Girls rock.
Say it louder.
Girls rock.
That's right. Thank you, Stephanie. I'd also like to welcome one of my dear friends who I've known for many, many years. She's an amazing woman. She's Veronica Melvyn, the CEO of LA Promise Funds, who's leading this effort here this morning. Welcome, Veronica. Do you want to say her name?
Thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman Martinez. Thanks for sponsoring the Girls Empowerment Month for the city. Thank you, city council members. We appreciate being here. I can't say enough about what type of opportunity and recognition the city council's endorsement of Girls Empowerment Month offers us. It really increases and highlights the work of LA Promise Fund and Girls Empowerment Month. Last year, we had over 7,000 girls participate. This year, we're going to push that up to 8,000 girls. We've had Will Rogers sign up again. We've had 100 other teams. We doubled the number of teams from last year. And they have to find technology-based solutions to areas in civic engagement, health, STEM, and college going. We're going to teach them to code and to build a website in order to put forward their solution. We're also going to be, we thank 20th Century Fox for offering us a premiere of the film Hidden Figures, which highlights the story of three African-American women in the role of NASA putting the first men in space. And we're going to bring more than 7,000 students out to see that at the USC Galen Center. And then we also, if anyone would like to get involved, council members as well, we will take girls on trips out to businesses to explore careers. So if you want to host any of these girls, we'll take schools of girls out. Please go to www.lapromisefund.org. Again, thank you for your support. We're so excited to make October Girls Rock Month.
That's awesome. Now, thank you very much. Fantastic.
Really good, exciting events coming to our city provided by LA Promise Fund. Thank you, Veronica, for always being here. I know we recognized this group last year, and I just want to invite all the council offices, if you know girls, if there's schools in your district that would like to participate, please let us know. We'd love to connect you. If you want to get some of your girls down to see the premiere of the movie, we'd like to also facilitate that as well. I know I'm encouraging my schools in my district and doing everything I can to expose girls to new careers and opportunities. So, girls do rock. I appreciate the opportunity. I want to recognize LA Promise and declaring October Girls Empowerment Month. Congratulations.
Fantastic. No, thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. I just, before you all scurry off and take a bunch of good pictures, I just want to rise and congratulate you all for this work. It's very, very important to our city at this moment in history. As you all know, and I'm speaking directly to you, the students, we are preparing to do tremendous work in this city, and we really, really need you. $13 billion rebuilding the airport, untold millions building out a rail system, a subway system in the city of Los Angeles, as well as rebuilding a lot of our neighborhoods. And we have the opportunity to do it this time, different than we've done it before, where men and women work side-by-side, people from every community and every neighborhood work side-by-side building the future for this city. So we really need you all to step up, learn these trades, and weigh in and help build the city for City of Tomorrow. Thank you all so much, and thank you, Councilwoman Martinez.
All right, thank you for that. And final presentation.
I am, I'm joining you all at the podium from here, so I'm standing there with you in spirit. All right.
All right, colleagues. Good morning.
Shalom, shalom.
It's a pleasure to be joined by my colleagues, Councilmember Englander from up there, Councilmember Corretts, City Attorney Mike Fuer, Controller Ron Galperin, as we mark Rosh Hashanah, the Jewish New Year. We're also here to welcome our new Consul General for Israel in Los Angeles, Sam Grundberg. I had the pleasure of sitting down with Sam just a few weeks back to go over projects that we're going to work on together. I'm really looking forward to your joining me as the co-chair of the Los Angeles Israel Task Force that I created with your predecessor, David Siegel. We're going to work on building on the exchange issues that we've already put together on clean tech and green tech and a whole variety of areas. So, wow, 5777. Folks, I'm still writing 5776 on my checks. It's an old joke, but it works every time. For my family and for millions of Jewish families around the world, Rosh Hashanah is a time to take stock and reflect on the year that has passed and the year that's to come. It's a moment for the community to celebrate the coming of the Jewish New Year with family and with friends. It's the holiest time of year in the Jewish tradition, and we're reminded upon the values of faith upon which this great nation was built. The fundamental decency of all men and women, of charity, justice, equality, to Kunalav, or fixing the world. For those of us gathered here in this chamber, all of us public servants of one way or another, it's a chance for us to redouble our commitment to fixing our own world, the City of Los Angeles. One of the most powerful concepts of the High Holy Days is that during this time, our fates are sealed in the Book of Life. On Rosh Hashanah, it is written, we say, on Yom Kippur, it is sealed. I find the concept tremendously moving as it serves to clarify my belief that each of us is entrusted with the responsibility of creating the world in which we want to live. And as we welcome the year 5776, I wish a shalom to va, umetuka, a good and sweet New Year to all of those celebrating across the world. May the year ahead be one of peace, health, and prosperity. And before I turn it over to my colleagues, I'd be remiss if not mentioning the passing of a great leader for Israel, a Nobel Prize winner for his lifelong pursuit of peace. I'm speaking, of course, of Shimon Perez, who we adjourned counsel in his memory on Wednesday. So after Rosh Hashanah, after this ceremony, we're going to have a short video in the honor of Mr. Perez's memory. And so right now, I want to invite my colleagues to speak, starting with Councilmember Paul Corretts.
All right. Thank you very much. And Bob, you said we welcome 5776. You're still stuck on that. It's 5776. Yeah, just, you know, it takes a while. Got to write a few more checks. All right.
A few thousand years, maybe. Well, colleagues, thank you for allowing us the opportunity to celebrate the Jewish New Year, Rosh Hashanah. Rosh Hashanah is a time when we celebrate the creation of humanity. It's a time when we can reflect on what we've learned the previous year and grow as individuals. Customary foods such as apples dipped in honey are eaten to symbolize a sweet New Year. Now, it's fitting that we are blessed this New Year to be joined by a brand-new Consul General, Sam Grundberg. Sam was appointed Consul General of Israel in Los Angeles by Prime Minister Benjamin Netanyahu in April of 2016 and assumed the post in August. He's the senior representative of the State of Israel to the southwestern United States. And immediately before becoming Consul General, he served as Director General in Israel for the World Jewish Congress, an international organization representing Jewish communities in over 100 countries to governments, parliaments, and other international organizations. As the head of WJC's operations in Israel, Mr. Grundberg advanced the overall mission of the WJC to strengthen and support Jewish communities around the world, as well as the State of Israel and the Jewish people. Before joining the World Jewish Congress, he worked as an attorney at a major international law firm in the United States and held positions in the fields of law and finance in the U.S. and Israel. Originally hailing from Miami Beach, Florida, Sam fulfilled a lifelong dream and moved to Israel in 1990. Once in Israel, he served as a combat soldier in the IDF Armored Corps and later in the IDF Reserves as a casualty officer. He is married to Julia, a nurse, and the couple has three children, Alicia, Felicia, and Sarita. The Consul General is also an avid sports fan and enjoys biking in his spare time. And I have to also acknowledge that he is a flag football champion back home. On behalf of the city, once we have done this, we will present you with a proclamation. But first, we'll hear from our other colleagues.
So next up to the microphone, we have our wonderful City Attorney, Mr. Mike Fuer.
Thank you very much, Mr. Blumenfield. Councilmembers, I wanted just to say a couple things. First, a warm welcome to our new Consul General. I was saying to Sam earlier today that it's been really remarkable to have such close relationships with Consuls General who have preceded him, and all of us are looking forward to that same quality of relationship, of collegiality, and, most importantly, finding ways to constructively advance our common goals together. So, Sam, good to have you with us.
Thank you.
You know, Bob was talking about the meaning of Rosh Hashanah, and he got it right. This is a moment for each of us to reflect on who we are as people and how we can be better. I want to try to translate that into a more universalistic message for all of us in the City of Los Angeles. Because even though this is the Jewish New Year, it reminds us that each of us has both the opportunity and the responsibility to be quite introspective as we reflect on how our city can be better and to bring a sense of urgency to grappling with the problems that confront all of us in our neighborhoods. Are we doing everything we can to address homelessness? Are we working to assure that every child has a very strong and equal opportunity to get a quality education here? Are our streets safe? How can we make them safer? What can we do to assure that everybody who wants a job in Los Angeles gets one? Among so many issues, is our environment being adequately protected here? And what is this council and what is this city doing to bring environmental justice to every neighborhood in our city? The message of Rosh Hashanah isn't merely a specifically Jewish message. It's a message that each of us, with each of our faiths and each of our communities, can embrace as we bring to this New Year a renewed sense of intensity and focus and passion and vision for how Los Angeles can be the best version of our great city. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fuer. And now, by the numbers, our next speaker will be our Controller, Mr. Ron Galperin.
Good morning, everybody, and shalom tova, which means Happy New Year to all. I want to first mention that after hearing the eloquence of the council members behind me and of our city attorney, I'm thinking we have like a whole panel of rabbis here in the city council today. But I want to begin by welcoming the new Consul General, Sam Grundberg. We had a chance to sit down last week, and I'm really looking forward to the years that you're going to be spending here in Los Angeles. We've been very blessed with some of the most incredible representatives from the State of Israel and a relationship between the State of Israel and the City of Los Angeles and of California as a whole. And I know that you're going to be continuing that, and for that, we're very grateful. And it's with great happiness that we greet you here, but also, it's a somber day in that we remember, as was mentioned, Shimon Perez, who was really one of the founding members of Israel. And that's a whole generation that has now passed, and we have so much to be grateful to them for and to learn from that generation, and particularly from Shimon Perez. He was a man who had great strength in the creation of the State of Israel, but also a man of tremendous peace and a man of great optimism, even when sometimes one is less than optimistic about what happens in the Middle East. And there's much that we can learn from that. So we're gathered for Rosh Hashanah, which is the head of the New Year, literally. It means rosh, means head. And it's a time for renewal, both as individuals and as a community, to take stock of our deeds, of what we've done, to examine ourselves as a community, as individuals. And it also ushers in the 10 days of repentance, leading up to Yom Kippur, which is the Day of Atonement. And the most important thing that one can do between the days of Rosh Hashanah and Yom Kippur is to say, "I'm sorry," and something that we don't do all that much with each other on a daily basis. But we have an opportunity to look at ways that we have interacted with others over the course of the year, and what can we do to repair relationships? What can we do to really have a sense of community, to get along with each other, to share love with each other? And that's the universal message of Rosh Hashanah. And so I wish all, not just in the Jewish community, but in Los Angeles as a whole, a year of happiness, a year of goodness, a year of health, a shalom tova, umetuka, a really good and a sweet New Year. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Controller Galperin. Next, you've heard his bio from some of my colleagues. We're talking about our new Consul General, who was mentioned, he was known for his flag football in Israel, but what wasn't mentioned, he was actually in the, he's a Hall of Famer for that. So, Sam, take it away.
Thank you, Councilmember. We, the only thing we didn't say is how many people are in that Hall of Fame, but we'll keep everybody curious on that. Thank you all so much. It's really an honor and a pleasure to be with you all this morning with the City of Los Angeles. Councilmembers, I want to thank particularly the council members who invited me and initiated this event. In my honor, Councilmembers Blumenfield, Corretts, and Englander, and really all of you in the kind words. It's really moving for me and for my family to be here. We've been here now barely a month, and we've been embraced by this city, by the community, by the leaders, in such a warm, such a warm manner that we're really moved beyond words. And I know that looking ahead to the coming years that we're going to be here, we're going to do a lot of very, very good things together. I want to mention, before I give some comments about Rosh Hashanah, Shimon Perez, as was mentioned here earlier. First of all, I want to, on behalf of the State of Israel, want to thank the community and the City of Los Angeles and the council members here in particular for really the outpouring of love and the condolences that, heartfelt condolences that were communicated to us. As you all know, we lost one of the founding fathers of the State of Israel, and Shimon Perez really personified the very principles that the State of Israel stands for. Courage, optimism, persistence, resilience, vision. He was really larger-than-life as a visionary. His thirst for knowledge and his real commitment to the State of Israel and the Jewish people, but really, really to the entire world. And I think that it's fitting, at a time like this, where we gather today to mark the Jewish New Year, Rosh Hashanah, but as was mentioned, it's not just the Jewish New Year. Some of the previous speakers mentioned that it really marks the creation of humanity. So it's really for all humanity. And just like with the death of Shimon Perez, which is the end, the end of an era, and as we mark with Rosh Hashanah, the end of the closing Jewish year, every end is also a beginning. And every challenge is also an opportunity. And so we look at the year that passed, we look at the year ahead, and we really do stop and take stock about everything about our lives, about how we did, how we can do better as individuals and also as communities. And as the new Consul General of Israel here in Los Angeles, I think that this really guides us coming into the New Year in terms of relationships. Rosh Hashanah is also about assessing our relationships on a personal basis, professional, and communities. And the relationship that the Israeli consulate here in Los Angeles has with this community here has been a strong one because we're looking at, again, the end and the beginning, but we're also looking at continuity. And what I am very privileged and honored is to be in a position to continue and to expand and strengthen the very close relationship that we have had with the City of Los Angeles, with the leadership in Los Angeles and the communities. And I know that we'll continue to work together going forward in the future to identify challenges that we have, that we share, and where we can work together. Israel has a lot, as all of you know, to offer and contribute in ways of innovation, technology, water, agriculture, cybersecurity, medical innovations, and working together to bring all of these solutions to our communities, to really help one another and make our communities a better place. And so I want to really give a blessing for all of us as we go into this New Year, again, not just as the Jewish New Year, but really celebrating humanity together, of strengthening relationships, expanding and really strength through our unity together. And I also want, on behalf of the State of Israel, to thank all of you for your ongoing support for the State of Israel. We appreciate it. We do not take it for granted. And I will just add, on a lighter note, that one of my first New Year's resolutions, because this is the time of the year for us for New Year's resolutions, is going to be to work to be a Los Angeles Rams fan. Because as was mentioned, I grew up in Miami, and I'm a big Miami Dolphins fan. Because as was mentioned, I grew up in Miami, and I'm a big Miami Dolphins fan. And so that's, that's one of my resolutions, I'm committed to that. But in all seriousness, I wish all of us, a Shana Tova for all of us, and we'll continue to work together, and I look forward to all of the new relationships on a personal basis. Thank you.
Yeah, we're, we're going to help you fulfill that resolution and keep on you about that. Next, we have another great friend and a representative of the Jewish community from the Jewish Federation, Jay Sanderson. Jay?
Morning, everyone. I'm not going to talk that long because I don't want the next person to say, "Good afternoon." When you are the eighth speaker in an esteemed hall like this, there's not a lot to say. So I'll be very, very brief. When I look around this room and I see so many friends, I'm also very heartened by the fact that 10 people in these chambers today have gone to Israel with the Jewish Federation of Greater Los Angeles. So Councilman Ru is shaking his head, he's already advocating for his second trip. I want to thank you for your partnership. The Jewish Federation of Greater Los Angeles is the central organization in this community. We are your partners. And as speakers before me said, this is a time for self-reflection, not just as a community but as individuals. We do have to ask ourselves how we can be better. And I ask you, how can the Jewish Federation work even closer with this esteemed body to do greater work for the city of Los Angeles? So I look forward to continuing our work together, and I look forward to next year and when we assess how much we've accomplished this year and where we go, and hopefully we will continue to go from strength to strength. Thank you.
Now colleagues, you may have noticed on your desk something unusual. You have, each of you has on your desk some apples and some, and a honey stick. And some of you may have cheated and already eaten your apples, but if you haven't, you've got two left. Okay, good. So now we're going to have, it's time for the, for the blessing before we dip our apples in honey. And, and for that, I'd like to ask Rabbi Jonathan Bernhard and Rabbi Morley Feinstein to come up, who's, and he's going to blow the shofar, and we're going to hear the blessing over the apples and honey.
So before we call on my predecessor as president of the Board of Rabbis, Rabbi Jonathan Bernhard of Congregation Adat Ariel, I'd just like a moment of reflection. My grandfathers, one came from Odessa, and the other came from a tiny little shtetl, a little town outside Vilna. I don't think in their lifetimes they would ever have imagined that we would hear a shofar in the hall of civic government, nor would they have imagined the diversity surrounded by the Jewish members of the council, our city attorney, our city comptroller, our mayor, and the members of the council with the diversity that exists here. That would not have even been a dream in my grandfather's generation. And that's one of the teachings of Rosh Hashanah. Shana can also mean Sheena, a time for change. Change happens. That's our hopeful message of this New Year. Change exists. A small little seed turns into an apple. A crisis in homelessness can turn into an opportunity to care for the citizens of Los Angeles. And that's why I'm proud as the president of the Board of Rabbis of Southern California to join with the Los Angeles Council of Religious Leaders in supporting Proposition H for the homelessness bond, and to do all that we can, the weekend of October 14th through 16th, just following the High Holy Days, we're calling for a weekend through religious communities throughout the city of Los Angeles to have a weekend of homelessness awareness and action. For us as Jews, that takes our prayers out of the synagogue and brings them into real life. And that's what we hope to do this New Year. Jonathan will be sounding the shofar. May it be a call for all of us to wake up this New Year and make the change that can happen. So by the way, it's a Rams horn.
Not directly sponsored by the team. So Jewish tradition holds that human beings are neither innately good nor innately evil, but that we're made up of different kinds of pulls, an urge or an impulse towards self and an impulse towards others, and that these impulses reside within us and continually struggle within us. Which is to say, Jewish tradition understands that human beings are innately messed up. Within that, though, we understand that that's not a static state, but something that we can rise above. That if we but pay attention or are awake to the challenges around us and to the potential within us, we can become better people, we can make our world a better place, we can bring the light. And that is what the shofar is about. It's about waking us up to that potential, to the potential that resides within us. It is like an alarm clock, it is like the bell on your phone or the reminder that you put for yourself to wake up to what it is that you and I as individuals and as a community and as a city can do to make our world a better place. There are four notes. One is te kiya, the other is shvarim, the other, the third is tura, and the fourth is te kiya gedolah. I'm going to sound all four notes at this time, and as customary as we would do if we were in synagogue or if I was in a classroom teaching, I'm going to ask everybody in the room to please rise.
Te kiya. Let's thank Rabbi Bernhard, and then we'll offer the blessing for the apple and honey. May this indeed, come Sunday night, be the beginning and the dawn of a New Year filled with sweetness. Dip your apple in the honey, enjoy.
Thank you all, thank you. Oh, Mr. Blumenfeld.
One more thing, which we alluded to at the beginning. We have a short video about Shimon Peres that we're going to play on the screen as marking the era. Nice.
Well done.
May he rest in peace, and Shana Tova, everybody.
Mr. Corretts?
On behalf of the city, we would like to present our new council general, Sam Grundberg, with a commendation from the city of Los Angeles. Thank you.
Congratulations and welcome.
Thank you all very much.
We want to quickly, just for one speaker, move to general public comment. Jimmy Chai, Jimmy, are you still here? Please come forward. I want you to be able to do this when we have more, more people that are here in the chambers. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Council President. Honorable councilmen members, my name is Jimmy Chai, and I'm here to bring awareness to the increasing rate of veteran suicide. As you may or may not know, through the 22 Push-Up Challenge, approximately 22 veterans a day commit suicide. That's a very humbling and very shocking number. I find it saddening that we send these men and women to go fight a war, to protect our lives, and they come back and find out that their wives, that their lives are worthless or not worth saving themselves. I'm here to say I support them, that I thank them and appreciate them, and also that their lives matter. Their lives matter to me. And so in honor of that, as a part of the 22 Push-Up Challenge, I am going to honor them by doing the 22 push-ups right now, if you don't mind.
Go right ahead.
And if you can count along with me, people in the room, that would be amazing.
One, two.
Three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, 20, 21, 22.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you so very much. Thank you. Now I'm going to give Mr. Price to do 22. Anyway, I'd like to, I'm looking for Ms. Martinez. Item, you want to do?
12.
You want to do item 12?
If we can, please, let's move on to item 12.
Yes.
Colleagues, on the 40th anniversary of the Hyde Amendment, I'm asking the city council to call on Congress to pass the Each Woman Act, which would support and reinstate insurance coverage for all reproductive services for women enrolled in public insurance programs. Women of color are disproportionately affected by legislation like the Hyde Amendment. The primary people affected by this decision are many of my constituents, my constituents as well as yours. The reality is that the women of color and low-income communities significantly are more affected and receive federal aid. So it's important for us to address this matter. So when we talk about prohibiting the use of federal funds for comprehensive reproductive services, we are asking that we, what we're doing is we're taking, we're talking about restricting access to my constituents, constituents. Politicians shouldn't restrict access based on how much a woman makes or where she lives. No woman, particularly the most vulnerable in our society, should be forced into unwanted or dangerous pregnancies by some Washington DC politician. So today I'm asking that the city council call on Congress to repeal the Hyde Amendment and restore federal funding for comprehensive reproductive services. As long, I have a long history of supporting reproductive services to women, particularly in my community, and I will continue to support this access. I ask for your eye vote. With us here this afternoon, we have the Los Angeles Coalition of Reproductive Justice. Can you please, ladies, stand up? Thank you very much for continuing to fight for women's reproductive services throughout the city of Los Angeles. Colleagues, I ask for an eye vote.
Okay, thank you. With that said, Madam Clerk, would you please open the roll? Close the roll, now tabulate the vote.
13 eyes.
That is unanimously approved. Let's go to item 18.
Thank you, sir. Is it two minutes today on item 18?
Go ahead.
Okay, it's the civic engage, it's the, Martinez is greeting her crowd, but she's working on making it Civic Engagement Month for youth here in Los Angeles, which I think is a great idea. And I just want to say to the team, including Fuer here a moment ago, there is no time limit on self-reflection, sir. So as we think about youth engagement and how to involve young people in this process, I would recommend, we're going to be considering it for a week in connection with your rule, number 77, that the idea of reducing public comment that you came up with in your committee with Mr. Marquise Harris-Dawson be...
No, you got to stay on the subject.
Sir, this is about civic engagement.
No, stay on the subject, Mr. Previn.
Count as civic engagement? It is exactly what civic engagement. There was an article which I sent to Justin about civic engagement, it was in the title, for a young teenager who stood up for herself to get it so that kids who are 16 years of age could vote in their little town, which I thought was such a beautiful expression.
Okay, you want to do your general public comment?
Are you seriously going to shut me down?
Do you want to do your general public comment, Mr. Previn?
Well, yeah.
Go ahead.
Is that, is it general public comment now, sir? What about the other eye? Okay, fine, general public comment, fair enough. I'm going to try to regroup. The reason why I care about it is, down here at the Temple of Democracy on a regular basis, you can find people in the corridor trying to reduce their two minutes, which is advertised as what a general public comment is, to just 60 seconds. Because half of the people who show up at this hall, park for $20 and come in to address their local leaders, are sent away because of your system of satisfying yourself in committee that Mr. Faubel believes is compliant with the Brown Act. It's painful for residents who come down here. There were a bunch of guys for the Lawa event last week, there was a People for Animal Barking Ordinance, they came, one woman came from Utah, only because I was filming Morris, where they, did you finally let her speak? But what about the, you know, dozens of people from the Venice Improvement District? Both for and against, who came down here, but you said, "No, sorry, we'd had it at a different meeting," thanks to the schedulers, who make it hard to see. An agenda shouldn't have three separate sections that you need to have the sort of...
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. I was just turning to my colleague here, couple questions. Colleagues, with this vote before you, and encouraging an eye vote, we will declare the month of October as Youth Civic Engagement Month here in the city of Los Angeles. And the idea to create a Youth Civic Engagement Month was created, and this resolution drafted by my own youth council last year, led by former youth governor Nico Gardner, who has now just embarked on a new chapter in his life. Nico's at, in Nashville, in college. I know he's monitoring and watching. So in order, it's important for us to make sure our youth are involved in their government and community from an early age, which I feel is essential to ensuring civic participation later in life. It's also important that we, as leaders, are hearing from our youth so we can fully be, they can fully be informed before making decisions that impact them. And when I founded the LAPD's first, first teen advisory panel, I experienced firsthand the positive effects of empowering our youth. And I've always said, "When teenagers speak, people listen." Additionally, in my role as National League of Cities, I've continued to support their initiatives to increase youth civic engagement. And I could stand here and talk about youth civic engagement all day long, but let's hear it from one of our own. I want to call up Kimberly Talavera, a proud young woman from Wilmington, California, who I have asked to answer a few questions. Why it's important that we, as a city, reach out to youth, what experiences have made you civically engaged, and how do you, how does the city need to improve getting youth involved in the civic process, and, and what, I'd like to hear her vision for the city of Los Angeles. So help me welcome Kimberly Talavera.
Good morning, Council, President Weston, honorable members of the LA City Council, staff, and members of the public. I am Kimberly Jasmine Talavera, a recent graduate of Bishop Montgomery High School and resident of the city of Wilmington, the heart of the harbor. I'm a proud 17-year-old Chicana, a community youth advocate, and an immigration activist. I am the only girl in my family, and also the first to pursue a college education, currently as a bio major. As a daughter of two Mexican ex-patriots, I was raised to stand firm in my roots and reflect the essence of my heritage. I was exposed to the political world at a very young age, as I eventually found that being part of the minority is already politics all in its own. I've lived in four different cities here in Los Angeles, I've gone to eight different schools, and through the experience, I have the undis, I have seen the undisputed gap between our communities, between the services received and the opportunities presented. Too often, our governments use a one-size-fits-all solution, which does not fit everyone when it comes to the people in our cities. I'd like to use my high school as an analogy. Although diverse, Bishop was a prestigious school in a high-income neighborhood. The majority of the students were not first generation, their parents knew how to help students apply to college and would even hire their own college counselors. Because this was a norm, there was... Because this was a norm, there was a lack of resources for those who did not fit into the category. Students like me, who were placed on scholarship because of their academic excellence, the students who have to translate the parents' newsletters to their families, the students who granted are intelligent but don't have the resources to get to college, those students are overlooked, because one size just didn't fit all. The same happens with the communities in our county. In particular, the working-class neighborhoods require resources that would grant them the equal opportunity to thrive towards success at the rest, as the rest of the county, and I believe one of the best ways to counteract that one-size-fits-solution is to help our youth become more civically engaged. Fortunately, empowerment organizations exist, such as the one my parents have wholeheartedly been a part of, as well as I have since the age of 13. The Council of Mexican Federation to North America, which advocates to create opportunities for Latino immigrants. As a member of this organization for almost five consecutive years, I can say that civic engagement has allowed me to feel as part of the society, rather than an outcast. It has given me a way to advocate for civic engagement, community organizing, education, environment, healthcare, and immigration, things I would love and believe the Los Angeles City Council would pursue. My voice matters, my points are valid, I've seen enough and I've learned plenty, and I've tried my very best to enlighten those who are protected from injustice and inequality. The struggles my Black and Asian Pacific Islander brothers and sisters withstand are my own, as my social restraints are their struggles as well. As one entire diverse canty, every resident must politically be aware of what lacks in their community, so that they may request the aid they are entitled to. The need to introduce the youth to civic engagement is non-negotiable, if not vital. How must we expect the future of tomorrow to combat the battles of their time if they are unaware of what is going on in their society, nevertheless incognizant of who represents their communities? Even after all in which I've taken part of until this day, I still feel like there is so much more yet to learn and understand, and granted the opportunity, I know it'd be a much better attribute to my community. I do not condone those who decide not to take part in politics, but I can understand why they wouldn't want to. It is difficult to try and comprehend something that seems far too out of reach. However, in this democracy, it is through our voices that change ignites. It is through the people and for the people. Our local government must either lead or follow. A compromise must always be reached on behalf of our people and political leaders. America's development is determined by its people. The youth deserve to be a part of the future of tomorrow. Civic engagement consists of promoting quality of life in the community and in reaching out to the youth. The local government is, the local government would only be fair. Public concern involves everyone, and in order for America and our communities to progress, we must recognize the validity of the youth in our cities and their fight for a better community. Thank you.
And for Kimberly Talavera from Wilmington. We recognize your love and commitment to ensuring that our youth have a voice here in the city of Los Angeles. And our colleagues, each and every one of us here, our respective council districts have a number of existing youth programs, and I recognize that, we recognize that. The mayor just graduated a number of young men and women in the city of Los Angeles through his mayor, Mayor's Youth Council. And it's important now, moving forward, that throughout the month of October, to please encourage high school students and college students to intern with your office. When speaking at events, highlight opportunities available to young people to participate in neighborhood councils or local organizations, or volunteer at community events. Also, we need to encourage our young men and women to sign up online to vote. We have a Youth Civic Engagement Month flyer that we presented to each and every one of you. You can also share the application for students to apply to be a part of the Mayor's Youth Council. And my office has outlined more steps that you can take to encourage young people to connect, get more engaged, become civically engaged in the informational handouts at your desks. You can also visit our website, le15th.com, and under the tab, Youth Civic Engagement Month, click on that. So again, thank you, Kimberly. Thank you, colleagues, for your support in identifying and naming the month of October as the Youth Civic Engagement Month, especially even more so as we gear up for the November elections. We need to ensure that our young men and women have a vote and have a voice in moving forward in the electoral process. So, thank you, Mr. President. I know this is very important to you as well, and what you've done in your district in empowering young men and women in the 10th council district, and thank you for your support on this.
Thank you. Okay, with that said, Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll now, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
That is approved. Okay, Madam Clerk, can we recess the regular and move into the special meeting?
Yes, sir. Let me read the roll.
Go ahead.
Blumenfeld, Bonin, Buscayino, Sadio, Englander, Harris Dawson, Weezer, Corretts, Krikorian, Martinez, O'Farrell, Price, Rue, Wesson, 14 members, and a quorum, Mr. President.
Okay, let's take up item 24.
Item 24 through 27 are items which public hearings have been held, and council is on 24.
Okay, let's take items 24 and 26 then, together. Let us open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
Okay, on item 25, I move that we suspend the rules and adopt the recommendations of the rule committee. So our vote, first vote will be on suspension of the rules. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
And the second vote will be to adopt the item. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
Now we'll go to item, I believe it's... Okay, we're gonna go to item 28. I have Mr. Walsh and Mr. Spindler. Item 28 in the special.
Mr. President, item 28 is a item where public has, a public hearing has not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay, so without objection, that's before us, and I've called forward Mr. Walsh and Mr. Spindler on that item.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, or Jay Walsh confidential tweeting at HollywoodDems. This is something I've never seen before. You're adding an aide position with the Controller's Office without funding it. So how does, how does the, who gets this job? Where's the chart? You're now bringing in people as volunteers. Can you believe, relative to residents? No one's gonna ask any questions about this. No one's gonna say, "Well, how is somebody, who is going to take this job without funding? Where is the Controller to answer the questions? Has this been done before? How many people working here are working and being paid without funding? Nobody ever." The funding is coming from somewhere, and the somewhere is the developers. We put on the Neighborhood Integrity Initiative, "We're Going to Win." And you can try all you want, we're going to court.
Mr. Spindler?
Okay, the pig has some ideas here.
Yes, I know that this is an unfunded Controller aide. What does the aide control do? What is he going to do to assist the Controller Ron Gaboran? Of course, unpaid, all those nights in various hotels all over the United States. It's going to be a personal entourage, yay! So you don't want to pay the aide that way. When the sexual harassment case comes before you later, you'll say that this person wasn't an employee, but you're wrong. Look at the California Supreme Court will rule this person is a city employee, and when Ron Gaboran sexually assaults him, he will be able to sue the city. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Let's prepare to vote on this item. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
Okay, and additional clarification on item 25. The rules were suspended, the item was voted on, so that it could take effect immediately, Mr. City Attorney. Now, let's move to item 27. Mr. O'Farrell? On item 27, let me say this. On item 27, there was a mix-up in the Rules Committee, and there was some confusion that I believe that I caused. And so what I'd like to do now is reopen public comment for, let's say, 12 minutes, a minute each, because I was unable to, in fact, I think we were both, or all of us were a little confused, and I wanna make sure they afforded the opportunity. So why don't we start like this? Why don't I, I want Rudy, Rudy Ortega will start with you, and then I think Chrissy Castro and Hector Pacheco. So why don't we start like that? And if, if it's okay with Mr. O'Farrell, then the floor is yours. And sorry for the mix-up in committee.
No worries, Mr. President. Council President, council members, it's an honor to be here before you. I'd like to do two items, actually, one before I go on to item 27. Sure, well, I'll do it real quick. Actually, I have a presentation for all the council members here, if we can give these out.
Sargent?
Heritage Month is November, and we like to have all the council members invited, so it's an invitation and also an offering of sage bundles, a tradition in our native culture. So that one's, that one's done. Now, the next one is the item number 27. I've come before you as the council member of the Chairman of the Indian Commission, and also, I'm sorry, Chairman of the Indian Commission, a commissioner, and also I am the tribal president from the Ferdinand Digno Totavium Band of Mission Indians. We stand in support of the Standing Rock Sioux Tribe, who's fighting the Dakota Access Pipeline, and many of us who stand behind me are in support, as well as many other organizations and tribes throughout California, as well as the Gavilino. The chairman, Anthony Morales, sends his support as well to me, and says that he's in favor of this motion, and asks that the City Council supports, and thanks the City Council members as well in supporting passing a resolution in support of Standing Rock. I'll pass it over to Chrissy Castro.
Thank you. So Ms. Castro, followed by Mr. Pacheco, followed by Mr. Quintana, I believe. Yes?
Good morning, thank you for having me. I'm Chrissy Castro, I'm a citizen of the Navajo Nation and the Vice Chairwoman of the Los Angeles City-County Native American Indian Commission. Today, our Los Angeles indigenous community stands with Standing Rock in their fight for the protection of their sacred waters and lands and way of life. We say that Standing Rock is everywhere, because our human rights and religious freedoms are being violated as we show up in prayer with women, with elders, with children, and we're met with state violence. From Standing Rock to the San Francisco Peaks, Mount Taylor, Red Butte, Hila River, Monaca Ya, Medicine Lake, Oak Flat, and here in California, Tongva, Totavium, Hoopa, Yurok, Owens Valley, Ahashaman, Panhe, Pavanga, Banning Ranch, Playa Vista, we are all related and connected in knowing what's worthy of fighting for: water, land, and life. This is a beautiful moment, where we are standing up and recognizing our unity and strength as indigenous peoples, and we stand here in solidarity, and we thank you for your support.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Yes, my name is Hector Perez-Petreco, I'm a Quechua from the Confederation Tahuanti Suayo, and within our, they refer to us as Incas, and within our traditions, we have our prophecies, and that's what guides us throughout our existence. And the prophecy of the condor and the eagle is unification of our nations and our peoples up and down this hemisphere. But his occurrence in North Dakota, within the Standing Rock, within the pipeline, is within also another prophecy, which is, which is the black snake prophecy. And, and so within all nations, tribes, up and down the hemisphere, around the world, we're coming together in support of Standing Rock. So we'd like to urge your support, and we'd like to also acknowledge and thank the Council Member Mitch O'Farrell for taking this, taking this issue that, which is a very important issue for our communities and for the future of life.
Thank you. Thank you. So next, is it Joseph, Joseph Quintana, followed by, I believe, Carolyn or Caroline Ward?
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Kuutsi. My name is Joseph Quintana. I'm from Santa Domingo Pueblo, that's out of New Mexico. But as you know, we have so many different American Indian populations in this particular area. We appreciate your time and consideration. I represent a nonprofit organization that currently provides human services for over 100 different tribal members. That means tribal customs, tribal beliefs, tribal languages. But there's one common denominator that befits all of our people, and that's a very, not only it's a native perspective, but it's a very human perspective. And that perspective is, how do we harness protected sacred water? We know how sacred it is, because it's not only happening in Standing Rock, but what could potentially happen here in our own territory. We know in Los Angeles, with this drought, the impact that it has on all of our people. So we appreciate your time, we appreciate your support. We hope that you learn, not only do you learn, but also your public, your constituents also learn about what is happening out there, not only in Standing Rock, but across Indian country. Thank you.
Thank you. So do we have Ms. Ward? Please come forward. And I can't make out all of the name, but the middle initial or nickname is Grumpy. So if you, Grumpy, you're next. Yes, ma'am.
Hello, my name is Caroline Ward Holland, and I am a tribal citizen for the Ferdinand Digno Totavium. I'm also the leader of Nimpitanagam, which is Walk for the Ancestors. My son and I walked 780 miles from Sonoma, California, to San Diego to honor the indigenous ancestors of this area, our tribal homeland. The indigenous struggles that we have need to be addressed, and I, myself, and the indigenous people of this area, do support Standing Rock, and we ask that you come to a resolution to do so as well.
Thank you. Come forward and give us the, all of the names.
Okay. Nestel, hello. I am Tatoni Quezacoa, Grumpy Reynoso. I am of the Eagle Totec Nation, here, standing before you. Also, a strong member and representative of the local Teamsters 396. We are over 10,000 strong. We had our national general meeting last Sunday, and I put it on the dock to vote if we could stand by our brothers and sisters in Standing Rock. And unanimously, it was voted to agree to stand with Standing Rock, with our brothers, the protectors, because we are all water. That's why we say, "Water is life." And also, we are also in union with the Harmony Keepers in Cusa, another founding warrior society to protect all nations of Mother Earth. And we are here before you, and also our brother Mitch O'Farrell. His family is hardcore Teamster, and we stand strong behind this, and we want you to vote with your mind clear. That's why we have the sage bundles to vote for Standing Rock.
Thank you, Mr. Reynoso.
Teamsters in the house.
Thank you. So if I could get now, Oscar de la Torre, I think Marcos Aguilar, and Edward Ziwim Tinua? Please identify yourself, sir.
Good morning, my name is Oscar de la Torre. Good morning, members of the council. My, I'm a school board member in the city of Santa Monica, Santa Monica-Malibu Unified School District, and I stand today very proud of all of you, all the various issues that, that were supported earlier today during the council meeting. And I know that there's support for this resolution. I wanna thank Council Member O'Farrell for bringing this resolution forward, because water, life, Mother Earth, is important to protect. We need to, we need to do what we can to ensure that we protect our residents, our people, from hazardous materials and toxins that exist in our environments. And, and I come from a community that prides itself in doing so. I wanna let you all know that by you passing this resolution today, you're inspiring us in the city of Santa Monica to bring forward a similar resolution, so I'll, I'll make sure that we do that, to send a strong message that we're all united in Southern California to support Standing Rock and the people that are fighting for dignity and for self-determination. And God bless you all for your work. Thank you.
And thank you for yours. Okay, Aguilar, Mr. Aguilar, then I need Edward, and then I have Judith Garcia, and Emiliano Martinez. Yes, sir, identify yourself, please.
Marcos Aguilar, Executive Director of Semillas Sociedad Civil en Instale, and Council Member Weezer's District. I wanna commend Council Members O'Farrell, Wesson, Corretts, and Weezer for considering the support of the Lakota, Dakota, Nakota peoples, and the Standing Rock Sioux Nation in particular. As one of two heads of schools of the only indigenous peoples public community school in Los Angeles County, Anahuacalmecac, I urge this council to adopt a strong resolution against the construction of the Dakota Access Pipeline in support of the sovereign Standing Rock Nation Sioux Nation, and against the use of violence... and against the use of violence by police and private armed guards to suppress the prayers and protection represented by the hundreds of indigenous persons gathered at the Red Warrior Camp and the Sacred Stone Camp.
In fact, let me stop you for one second. Mr. Spindler, sit down. And show respect to these folks that are here. That you are not speaking, they're speaking. And I'm not going to let you sit, stand up there behind them, and ridicule what it is they're trying to do by waving a pig. You're disrupting this meeting. Now, sit down. This is very important to all these people that have come from as far as New Mexico. That I'm not having. I am so sorry, Mr. Aguilar. Continue.
Thank you very much. We heard earlier today that this day is a great day for apologies. And this country owes much apology to indigenous peoples, to the children in particular of indigenous peoples in this continent. Your resolution today is a beginning. On behalf of the over half million indigenous children and families in Los Angeles, we call upon all governments and agencies to respect all treaties. We call upon this council to adopt and implement the Indigenous Peoples' Day with all due haste. And we also call upon this council to adopt and implement the United Nations Declaration of the Rights of Indigenous Peoples. Thank you very much. Water is life.
Thank you. So if I could have the next speaker, please come forward and identify himself. Yes, sir.
Thank you for the Honorable City Council. My name is Edward Weymatiwa. I'm a community leader from the Zuni Reservation. I've been to Standing Rock Reservation. I've met with the chief, Dave Archibald, and a young leader, an attorney, named Chase Iron Eyes. These are prominent leaders at the camp. And I just want to say that it's a hard life they're living right now. At the camp, these leaders whom I mentioned are out there trying to work with the peoples, trying to feed the peoples, trying to keep the supporters warm. But at the same time, they're addressing heavy legal issues. Lot of responsibility, especially when you're deciding how you're going to spend your people's monies. Resources are hard to come by. Not only financial resources, but in protecting our tribal natural resources. Please support the resolution, and I commend you strongly.
Thank you, sir. Okay, so I have Ms. Garcia, followed by Emiliano Martinez, followed by, I think it's Monique Castro, maybe? Yes, ma'am.
Good morning. My name is Judith Garcia. I live in Echo Park. And I'm a head dancer, head artistic dancer. And I'm here to support the struggle of Standing Rock Sioux Tribe and other communities in their struggle against this dangerous and destructive pipeline, North Dakota Access Pipeline. Oil pipelines break, spill, and leak. It is not a question of if. It is a question of where and when. But the Army Corps of Engineers are easing a permit. And they never took a hard look at the impacts of the spill on the tribe as the law requires. Now, the pipeline will run through the land that is sacred to the tribe. The law requires that sacred places be protected in consultation with the tribe. So we ask you to please stand with Standing Rock.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. If I give you more, I have to give other people more, and I do apologize. So if I can get Emiliano, followed by, I believe it's Ms. Castro. Yes, sir.
Good morning, or good afternoon, as the case may be. And I just want to say, my name's Emiliano Martinez of Yuamiyaki Tribe and a native of LA as well, born and raised here in beautiful Boyle Heights. And I just wanted to put forth a motion, too, that we need to do our part here. And it's a great day that you all are considering this motion to stand with Standing Rock. Standing Rock is everywhere. Water is life. We cannot live without the water, the fresh water to drink. And this issue affects millions upon millions of people. And it's not just over there, it's here. And we're addressing it. Thank you so much. We want also Indigenous Peoples' Day. I know that's coming up, too. So we want you all to support that, and thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
American Indian Movement, Southern California, also here representing.
Thank you. So for our last speaker, please identify yourself.
Hello. Good morning, afternoon. My name is Monique Castro. I am a citizen of the Navajo Nation, born and raised here in Los Angeles. Thank you for having me. I just want to say that I am in support with all my other brothers and sisters and indigenous people across our entire world, standing with Standing Rock. And we really do appreciate your support in supporting Standing Rock and the no-access Dakota Pipeline. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And I know there may have been other cards, but we reopened public comment for an additional... I think the request was 10 minutes. We did it over 12 minutes. Thank each and every one of you. Some of you have come from far distances. Some have come from Santa Monica. And we appreciate you coming down the road. With that said, I'd like to recognize Mr. O'Farrell.
Thank you, Mr. President. I also want to thank everyone for coming to council chambers today and from near and far, as Council President Wesson mentioned, all the way from New Mexico. Just colleagues, what we need to understand is that this has become an indigenous peoples' movement across the world with our allies across the world and indigenous peoples everywhere. This has really bubbled up to be one issue that I think collectively, everyone is ready to take on for a variety of reasons. And let me just talk about a few facts of the matter. And let me also say, I neglected to mention that I'm a proud member of the Wyandot Nation. Here are some facts of the matter. This... The Army Corps of Engineers permitted this North Dakota Access Pipeline through what is called Permit 12. Permit 12 is a mechanism of the Clean Waters Act enacted in October 8, 1972. It's a 50-page document, discusses ways to streamline small projects, much smaller than this project. And that's a very important component of this entire argument, small projects. General Permit Program intended for minimal environmental impacts. It's worth to note that in North Dakota alone, in the last few years, there have been hundreds and hundreds of pipeline breaks, oil pipeline breaks. And we know that this pipeline also traverses the Missouri River, which is the water source for the Standing Rock Sioux Tribe. In this case, it was used for an interstate pipeline, claiming that this one mega project was, in fact, hundreds of smaller projects under the guise of Permit 12 for the transport of hazardous materials through waterways and communities. It's given the size, scope, impact, and the misleading nature of how this was permitted that this permit should not have been used. And that is the crux of the issue. Unfortunately, in North Dakota, they don't have what California has. We have California Environmental Quality Act. They don't have that. This act bypassed NEPA, which is the National Environmental Policy Act. So this action of the Army Corps of Engineers violates not only what we feel is the law of the land, but the spirit of all that matters to tribal nations across the United States. So what we want to make sure that we do is that we include... We hereby include in our federal legislation program support of any legislation or administration action that upholds the rights of the Standing Rock Sioux Tribe and denies the construction of the Dakota Access Pipeline through their lands. It's real basic. And for anyone who is struggling with the question of, "Well, what does this have to do with Los Angeles?" Well, what we do in Los Angeles matters to the rest of the country. This is an opportunity for us to stand up to indigenous peoples and native tribes across the country and stand up for what's right. Quite frankly, we have a bloody history of broken treaty after broken treaty after broken treaty that has led to the degradation of Native America. And I think this puts us in great company with other cities, municipalities, and other groups that are opposing this illegal approval. And it puts us in a real good place of power and influence all the way to Washington, DC. So let's stand up for the Standing Rock Sioux Tribe. And by doing that, we stand up for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Farrell. Mr. Corretts?
Thank you, Mr. President. I seconded this resolution and I rise in strong support of Councilmember O'Farrell's effort and greatly appreciate it. Literally, every day around the world, we now have some kind of extreme climate event, every single day. Just last night, Salisbury, Maryland, received nine and a half inches of rain, which is about what we get in a year in California now. Detroit is flooding as we speak, and there are multiple floods around the world. Many climate scientists believe that we have fewer than 10 years to turn this around and still have a surviving human race. The bottom line is, we have to stop building fossil fuel infrastructure. The Standing Rock Sioux Tribe in North Dakota and so many indigenous peoples in North and South America, many of whom are represented right here today, are standing up to the fossil fuel industry and just saying no, as all of you are here today to say. You're saying, "No, not on our land." You're protecting your ancestral sites. You're protecting your burial grounds and sacred sites. You're protecting your water. And most relevant to Los Angeles, you're protecting our common planet. And we must stand with the Standing Rock Tribe and the indigenous peoples because you are standing for all of us. But thank you so much for being here, and I hope we pass this unanimously and send a critical message to the rest of the country and the rest of the world.
Thank you. Okay, now, there are no more speakers. Let's take this very important vote. Madam Clerk, would you please open the roll? Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
That is unanimously approved. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, Madam Clerk, if we could send all of the items from the special forthwith? With that said, if we could adjourn the special and return to our regular meeting? Okay, let's call forward at this time, Mr. Walsh, item 16, 17, 20, followed by Spindler. Mr. Spindler? So Mr. Walsh, come forward. You have your items and your public comments. So Mr. Walsh has 16, 17, 20, and public comment. Let's give him three minutes, Madam Clerk.
It violates the Brown Act. But up to two minutes and up to five minutes. But in any case...
Stay on the subject.
Number 16. And this concerns haul routes. Notice, most haul routes, the rules are, haul routes must go through black and Hispanic neighborhoods. And if at all possible, avoid Jewish neighborhoods. And I'm waiting for somebody, a Jewish community leader, to call me on this. My grandmother... My great-grandfather was born in Hungary. He was a Hungarian Jew. I just want blacks to understand you're on the bottom of the barrel. They even have haul routes that sidestep the Hispanic neighborhoods, but never the black routes. If you're going to haul something, haul it through the black neighborhoods. And your phony black leaders will do nothing about it. And they'll keep quiet when I call them phonies because they're real phonies. Okay. Help complete the Citizens Assessment Affair Housing Plan. They've spent... This is number 17. They've spent more money on assessments than they have on housing. The answer to everything is another plan. We have the worst homeless situation in America. And who gives a damn? They certainly don't give a damn up there. All they want to do is prevent me, us, the opposition, from speaking by violating the Brown Act. Number 20?
Last warning to stay on topic. Go ahead.
Relative to reinstating the award of the unsolved murderer, Portia Charles, for an additional six months. This is a $50,000 reward. Now, nobody... And the LA Watts Times, the Sentinel... Notice, they always put it in the black newspapers. I guess they don't think Hispanics commit murder. No, Hispanics love to... Gang members commit murder all the time. I'm telling you right now, snitches get stitches. I keep asking for you to tell me how many black and Hispanic minorities you've given... Paid out these rewards to. I get all sorts of vague things from Corretts. I don't get any facts from Corretts. I get all the phony Jewish statistics, which mean nothing. You can't Jew me because I'm a Jew myself. I'm telling you right now, the rewards... We have over hundreds of thousands of dollars in unpaid rewards. And if anybody... And everybody knows who committed these crimes in the neighborhood. And if anybody comes here, they will get their throats slit.
Give him his minute for general public comment. Mr. Walsh, you want your minute? General public comment?
Oh, yeah. I'm telling you right now, number one, Measure M. That's the half-cent sales tax. We must crush the half-cent sales tax. Are the... Is the expo crowded? It's crowded with diverted bus riders. You've canceled their service. Now, you're going to cut us down. What a piece of garbage you are, Mr. Rue. You came to our neighborhoods, and then... Did you say you were going to cut our public comment to five minutes? To five minutes? Are you a...
The Speaker should speak to the council or the president, not a particular member.
Speak to us as a whole.
I have a right to say this to Mr. Rue.
No, speak to the council as a whole.
You are a scumbag, a white scumbag, you scumbag piece of shit.
All righty then. Mr. Spindler? Items 1, 16, 17, 20, and public comment. So give him three minutes. And you have a minute per item.
Okay. The pig will take it.
That's right. Number one. Who do we thank today? Well, Marquisi Aristos and no liens. No liens in CD8. Yes, the revolution is working in CD8. No liens. Thank you so much. Now, we get over to CD5. The councilman is called Peppa Pig. And he's got one lien. It's Friday. It's a Jewish holiday. Can you please pay it out of your office holder account? In the name of the Hebrew faith, can you do that? It would be so nice.
Stay on topic.
It would be so nice in the tradition of the Arashashan.
No, stay on... That's not the topic.
Yes, well, it always is. Now, there's a lot of other things on the schedule, things that are bullshit on one hand and factual on the other. But so many things are mixed up. I'm a pig. How can I look through 13, 14 items and know which?
Stay on the sub. You're not on an item.
Well, okay, but the pig gets a little confused.
You're not on an item. Thank you. Give him a minute for his general public comment.
Yes. So see, you can't stop the pig. You cannot stop the Walsh. You cannot stop Mickey Jackson. You cannot stop the LA Weekly. And you cannot stop 4 million people from wanting two things: reparations and for you people to get the fuck out of here and put 15 puppets like me that will do a good job. that will do a good job. Because puppets that sit in chairs and vote automatically yes every time the thing is up on the vote is fraudulent voting, and that's what you're guilty of, and you're also guilty of other felonies and federal crimes in what you're doing. So keep up the good work. Now we have additional litigation issues on the Brown Act. Just keep fucking up all day long, and one day, Marquis Harrison will be sitting there laughing here.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
I have one card for item 16. Jamie Hall, are you here? Jamie Hall? I don't see anyone by that name. Jamie Hall is not here. This was item 16. Have another card for item 16. Neil Bower? Neil Bower?
Good afternoon, Neil Bower of Jeffrey Magles Butler &amp; Mitchell, representing the applicant. We understand that the appeals for both item 15 and 16 were withdrawn by the appellant's.
Just a second. Mr. City Attorney is informing me. Mr. Corretts, are you going to make an amendment to this?
My understanding is that the appeal has been withdrawn and that the two sides have essentially settled this issue, and I'd like to make a motion that we note and file items 15 and 16.
Okay, without objection, so we're going to note and file this item. Thank you so much for being here.
Madam President, there needs to be a second.
Second by Mr. O'Farrell. Thank you very much. So that concludes cards on items, for items 1, 16, 17, and 20. Those items are before us. Madam Clerk?
Madam President, it's 15 also.
15 is not on the board.
15 will be on the board, so Madam President, it's 1, 15, 16, 17, and 20. Yes.
Thank you very much. Okay, so let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote. 11 ayes.
Madam President, there is a request for item number 17 to go forth with.
Okay, without objection, item 17 will go forth with. Let's move on to public comment. Jacqueline Richardson, Mrs. Richardson, are you here?
Downtown Los Angeles has two sides, you call one black side, one white side, and also within that, there are scattered bits of people. In 2014 and 2015, I believe City Council granted $150 for each year for homeless housing. On the black side, I haven't seen any significant building that would reflect even a million dollars for that side, and I could be wrong, I've been wrong before, and I'm wondering if some of the housing was appropriate, were appropriated to the white side. If so, I don't, I can't, by eyeballing, not by knowledge, just by eyeballing, you can't tell. And I'd also like to know, who are the homeless? Are they high school dropouts, or are they immigrants from around the world? Sometimes I believe, I feel that it's immigrants from around the world, or are they refugees?
Thank you, Mrs. Richardson. That concludes public comment. Madam Clerk, what's before us?
Council has motions for posting a referral.
Post it and refer it. Members, are there any announcements? Mr. O'Farrell?
Thank you, Madam President. First of all, I want to announce that tomorrow evening at 6:30 at Echo Park, we are showing our third in a series of classic Hollywood musicals, and we are showing the production of Carmen Jones, filmed in 1954, directed by Otto Priminger, starring an Oscar-nominated Dorothy Dandridge, who is magnificent in the role, first African-American, nominated for a lead category actress, Dorothy Dandridge. Also stars Harry Belafonte. As I mentioned, it's the third in our series of classic Hollywood musicals. 6:30, open to the public free at Echo Park Lake. We hope everyone can join us for this incredible film. Next, I'd like to announce something very special. I am joined by Jim Nguyen and Karina Somala. Please step forward.
Thank you.
And what they are doing, along with our great city family member and leader, Shirin Buckman, who is here, they are working on trans voter empowerment. And so I'd like us to join the Human Relations Commission's Transgender Advisory Council for this voter improvement, I'm sorry, empowerment event on October 8th, and that's a week from tomorrow, from 2:00 to 4:00 at Plaza de la Cultura y Artes en el Pueblo. And it is a free event. It'll focus on the following: knowing your rights at the polls, including information such as whether you must show identification to vote, what happens if your identification does not match your gender identity, and whether you can vote if you have a criminal record, voter registration, the importance of voting as a trans person, information, resources available to voters, how to vote by mail, et cetera. Again, it's at El Pueblo, which is at 501 North Main Street, Historic El Pueblo, and the hours are from 2:00 to 4:00. I want to thank Karina and Jim for being here for this announcement, and it's all about registering and exercising the greatest right we have, and that is your right to vote. So thank you so much. You bet.
Thank you very much, Mr. O'Farrell. Any other announcements, members? Mr. Harrison?
Thank you so much, Madam Chair and members. I want to make a big announcement to everybody in the council chamber, on the squawk box and in TV land. On October 8th, Saturday, October 8th, we'll be having Fiesta South LA in celebration of Latino Heritage Month on the beautiful median at Broadway Boulevard at 102nd Street in South LA. We'll begin at noon and go till sundown. We'll have live music, we'll have carnival rides, activities for children. We'll also have a voter empowerment tent so folks can get information on voting if you have a felony, if you don't have ID, if your ID is different than you appear. So again, October 8th, 12:00 PM, Broadway and 102nd, Fiesta South Los Angeles.
Thank you, Mr. Harrison. Any other announcements, members? Mr. Kukorian?
Thank you very much, Madam President. Members, this past week, my district lost two more lives to hit-and-run accidents, and I shouldn't say accidents, excuse me, hit-and-run crimes. And the police are seeking help in identifying the perpetrators of those crimes. Rob Mueller died in Studio City, and there is a person of interest who you see projected up on the board there. The driver allegedly hit Mr. Mueller on Moore Park when he was crossing the street. He fled the scene, didn't render aid. The car is a 1998 Saturn S Series four-door, California license plate SHAY595. And the identified person of interest who you see pictured there is George Ronald Nicoletti. The police are seeking him as a person of interest. Also, on Tuesday evening at 3:30 AM, 75-year-old Patricia Richson, who had cerebral palsy and was in a wheelchair, was crossing Burbank Boulevard when she was struck by a Ford Transit van, which you see up there on the board. It's believed to be a 2010 to 2013 model Ford Transit van. Ms. Richson died at the hospital after being struck by that van, which did not stop to render aid, and the police are seeking help in identifying the suspect in that case as well. Anybody with information about either of these crimes, these cowardly crimes, should call LAPD's Valley Traffic Division at 818-644-8037, or if you want to remain anonymous, call Crime Stoppers at 800-222-TIPS. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kukorian. Members, any other announcements? Can we please rise for adjourning motions? Any adjourning motions, members? Mr. Kukorian?
Thank you very much, Madam President. I rise, colleagues, to ask that we adjourn this evening, this meeting, in memory of Rob Mueller, who, as I mentioned, was killed in a hit-and-run accident in Studio City at the age of 65. Mr. Mueller was a storied singer and songwriter who contributed a lot to the soundtracks of our lives without many of us having known his name. He was best known for his collaboration with his hometown friend, Christopher Cross. Christopher Cross and Mr. Mueller grew up together in San Antonio, Texas, and they were in rival bands as teenagers, but they had an immediate connection and eventually formed the group fronted by Christopher Cross. They started by opening for Bonnie Raitt, Fleetwood Mac, and the Eagles before they took the headlining role for good. Their 1979 album, Christopher Cross, was one that was owned by many of us. It was one of those albums that you had to have. Mueller played the synthesizer and keyboards and won five Grammy Awards, sold millions of records, and took the music world by storm. He's also known for his contributions to the Songwriting School of Los Angeles. He was one of the first successful musicians to lend a vote of confidence to the mission of the school and helped to lead the Songwriters Workshop, a peer-based song feedback class. He's survived by his wife Beth, who runs a respected theater program in Los Angeles, and it's very tragic that a man who contributed so much was taken to us so suddenly and so tragically and so prematurely as a result of this hit-and-run crime that occurred. And if I may, Madam President, I'd like to ask that we adjourn in memory of Patricia Richson, 75-year-old resident of North Hollywood, who was well-known to her neighbors and other residents in North Hollywood, who'd lived in the area for many decades. Although she was confined to a wheelchair as a result of her cerebral palsy, her friends remember Patricia as a very kind person with a heart of gold. They say that her congenital disorder stole her mobility, but it took nothing away from her spirit and her love of life, which sadly came to an end prematurely at the age of 75 as a result of this hit-and-run crime that happened this last Tuesday. I ask that we adjourn in her memory. May she rest in peace.
Thank you, Mr. Kukorian, and their families find peace with this horrible tragedy. Any other adjournments, members? Seeing none, our meeting is adjourned. Have a nice weekend.